Oh, there it's recording now. Okay.
Great.
Well, welcome, everybody. We will call this meeting to order at six oh four. Uh, and um Tina, there's two attendees. Do we want to bring them in? Uh, staff members and Laura?
As you as you wish.
Yes, we might as well.
All right, done. And so we have also Ian Cummings. I will bring all these guests in.
Good evening.
Hey, Mike. Hey, Ian.
Hey, y'all.
And where did Laura go? Laura's not here yet.
Still working on that. Okay, I'm promoting Laura to a panelist. She's coming whether she likes it or not. Here she comes. I believe we are all here now, including my cat. Sorry about that.
Ah, it's a beautiful cat.
Thank you. He'll be back.
You may see or hear one or both of mine before the night is through.
Yeah, they do. They do own the show.
All right, well, um, welcome, everybody. So uh, there's, there's faces here tonight that not everybody may notice, may recognize. So um, let's uh, let's go through and introduce ourselves. So um, I'm Jason Hamilton. And I am the Chair of the Board of Trustees. And my day job is that I am a professor up at Ithaca College in Environmental Studies and Sciences. Uh, and we'll go to Joe.
Joe Wilson, I'm Secretary to the Board. And I have no day job.
Lucky. Uh, and you, Mike.
Mike Moritz, College and Career Advisor, Senior Crew Leader. Been here one and a half years.
And the other, Mike.
Michael LaValsey, Attorney to the School. Um, and my day job is being an attorney.
And Mike goes way back with the school, right back to kind of the beginning of of all this business. Yeah. And Katie.
Hi, I'm Katie Terrello. I am the Treasurer of, on the Board, and I am also CPA at Shrubba Walker.
The, the institution with the unpronounceable name when you see it spelled, right?
Yes, yes.
Kate.
Hi, I'm Kate Thompson. I am Vice Chair on the Board, and my day job is I'm an Administrator at Cornell.
All right, Tanya.
I'm Tanya Saunders, and I'm a Board Member.
Great. And Tara.
Um, I'm Tara, and I'm the Co-Student Council Facilitator.
Grace, welcome, Tara. And uh, Leila? 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 Leila?
Leila.
Sorry about that, Leila.
No, it's okay. Uh, I'm Leila. Uh, I'm a Senior, and I'm one of the Council Facilitators with Tara.
Great. Peter.
Hi, I'm Peter Bertaglio. I'm uh, the Coordinator of the Tompkins County Climate Protection Initiative. And Executive Director of the Ithaca 2030 District, which New Roots is a member of. Building Efficiency Effort. And uh, I've been on the Board since the beginning.
All right, Ian.
Hello, I'm Ian Cummings. I am the Academic Advisor at New Roots.
Welcome. And Laura.
Hi, Jason and Peter.
Hello.
How are you? I'm Laura Lamesh. I'm a school administrator. I've been in this field for thirty years. I'm one of the founding Board Members, and um, uh, I've known Tina. We, we started together many years ago in another alternative school in Binghamton. It's, it's really wonderful to be a guest visitor to your Board. Thank you for including me.
Old home week.
Yeah, Laura was, Laura, I think last time I saw you is when we were driving down to the big city together to, to face the Charter Schools Institute um, to get approved.
And it was amazing how we navigated that traffic, Jason. I, I've never gotten in and out of Manhattan like that ever since. So uh, so we got there just in the nick of time, but that was a great day, wasn't it?
It was. It was. Well, welcome, everybody. All right. So um, we're gonna get, start right off with uh, uh, looking at minutes from last meetings and getting these things voted on so that we can uh, take care of all that stuff. So uh, we have, I'm looking at, we have several sets of minutes. Three sets of minutes that we have to go through, and I cannot, I can't see the full names of them, so I'm just gonna um, open up one. So, well, all right, we'll, we'll do these things in order. I will be lazy.
So there's one from, because we didn't have a, a meeting in November, we have two, we have two sets of minutes from October. So one is October sixth, the other is the twenty ninth. And then we didn't do minutes um, when we met on the first of December, so we had those minutes too.
So we're gonna look at the minutes from October first, twenty twenty, right now.
October sixth.
October sixth, yes. I don't know why I said that. Uh, October sixth, twenty twenty.
And I just put the link in, so if you don't have a copy handy, you can click on that link and go to our website to get um, all of these documents.
I'll give people just a second to look at that. And um, I will ask, is there uh, anybody have any corrections, modifications? Anything about October sixth? I think we'll vote on these things as a slate, so um, uh, you can continue perusing that one if you wish, but also now look, uh, please at October twenty ninth. This is the meeting where we had the report from the auditors. Any questions, corrections? Typos?
I'm sorry, this is picky. On October twenty ninth, Joe, there's this A that seems to be just floating in space under the Roman numeral two with it. Is it attached to that presentation piece?
Looks like there's a faulty tab or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the Roman numeral two should be Agenda Items, right? Then A Minutes.
Right, but that A is floating not with anything.
Interesting. It must be somebody's computer. My Word version doesn't show it that way.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna share a screen for a second. Um.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the A that she's talking about, Joe, floating out there?
Interesting.
Okay, so that's a formatting issue.
It's the only thing I have from that one. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, and then we will go on to the December first.
I am, by the way, letting in um, another student who's a member of our Student Council, Mason Colville. So he'll be joining us.
All right.
Welcome.
We're just reviewing minutes from the past three meetings, and we're gonna vote on them in just a second. So you haven't missed anything yet. Anybody have any comments on the minutes from December first? Okay, in that case, um, I move that we accept all three sets of these minutes. Uh, October sixth, October twenty ninth, uh, and December first, with the one uh, formatting uh, adjustment um, that um, Kate pointed out. Do I hear a second for that?
A second.
It's seconded by Katie?
So Jason, I, I was not, I did not attend the twenty ninth uh, meeting because that was uh, my wife's birthday that evening, and so I suppose technically I should have stayed, but if we roll it all into one package, it's gonna be hard to do.
All right, in that case, uh, Peter, I will separate them, just to make sure that everything is uh, all on the up and up. So uh, we're gonna uh, in that case, then, we're going to um, uh, go back and separate these things. So I move that we accept the minutes from October sixth only.
I'll second.
A second. I'm sorry.
By uh, by Katie. Uh, all those in favor to accept October sixth? Just raise your hand so I can see.
Can I ask, can I ask what minutes are? I have no idea. Sorry.
Uh, the minutes, Mason, are are the notes that the Secretary takes that tells us what we did on those meetings. And they become the record, uh, the official record of, of the Board's uh, actions and discussions. And so once we vote on them, then these become uh, the official documents that um, go to the Charter Schools Institute.
So Mason, if you click on the link I just put in the chat, you'll find all the documents that we're using for the meeting. They're on our website. Okay?
And so then October sixth passes unanimously, Joe. So now, uh, we are moving on to uh, October twenty ninth. Uh, I move that we accept the meeting minutes from October twenty ninth. Do I hear a second for that one? And that is seconded by Tanya. Any other comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And Peter, you abstain? Yes, so um, one abstention, Joe, and all the rest um, affirmative. And now we move on to the minutes from December first. Um, I move that we accept the minutes from December first. Do I hear a second for that one, please?
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Tanya, just because I saw her first, Peter. Um, all those in favor, please raise your hand so I can see it. All right, and that is unanimous, Joe. Great, thank you very much, everybody. Um, so uh, we have our representatives from the Student Council here tonight. Um, and I just wanna uh, offer Leila and Tara a chance. Do you have any sort of report that you want to give us, or do you just um, I'm not saying you should, I'm just giving you the opportunity that you can, if you wish.
Um, is a report on something specifically, or?
Uh, on, on, well, since you, since you two are the um, are the representatives to the Board from the Student Council. Uh, we just give you an opportunity to give us a report on anything that you want to give us a report on, on Student Council business. Uh, so it's, it's up to you if there is something that you just want to tell us about, or if there's nothing this time, then you can just say there's nothing this time.
Um, yeah, I don't think we have anything unless Leila and Mason can think of something.
To say a few words just about what types of issues that the Student Council has been working on, and I think I would like to take the opportunity to commend both of you for getting our Student Council up and running under such challenging conditions and really creating um, you know, creating a community that connects all students through, through Student Council. So that's a very big achievement, considering the, particularly considering the circumstances. So.
Thank you.
It looks like Joe has a question for you.
No, I don't have a question. I wanted to commend all of the students who attended the Strategic Framework Meeting. I got to sit in. Uh, I think Jason was there as well. I was very much impressed with the um, thoughtfulness and the systematic approach to looking at the framework that the students demonstrated. It was very impressive.
And I second that, Joe. Yep.
Yeah. Um, uh, so um, I guess today we had a Student Council meeting, and we mostly talked about recruitment in New Roots, and there are a lot of good ideas brought up. Mason brought up the idea of having like a New Roots YouTube channel and getting another videography elective, or we used to have a videography elective, but starting it back up again this spring. So I guess that's the report from today.
And Tara, that would be a class for credit. Is that what that means when you say a videography elective?
Um, yes, so it'd be elective credit, or um, if that doesn't go through maybe a club.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Mason?
Yeah, um, I'd like to add, um, we also talked about um, like, people could like share their stories of like, like things they went through and how like New Roots helped them.
Uh, and Mason, this, you're talking about uh, on the YouTube channel or in another uh? Sorry, say again?
Sorry, it could, um, it, it doesn't have to be the YouTube channel, but it could be.
Just whatever.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I think Mason brought up the idea of um, putting stories on Instagram, right? Wasn't that one of the ideas? So yeah, using multiple platforms um, to leverage, you know, like to share student videos about their experiences at the school.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So um, the, the next, I'm gonna reverse the next two items. I wanna get kind of the business-y, the business-y stuff out of the way first. Uh, and so we're going to reverse revised budget discussions with strategic planning. Katie, if that's all right with you?
That is fine with me.
Okay.
I'd rather get it over to.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn this over to Katie now, uh, the Board Treasurer for um, for uh, presentation on revised budget. And then the context here is that we uh, we have fewer students right now than we originally budgeted for. We made our budget last year. Uh, and so we have a revised budget that is recognizing the actual number of students that we have. And so I'll turn this to Katie.
Okay, so Board, I sent everybody the budget worksheets. Um, I sent you the details, so you could see how the sausage is made, so to speak, as well as the summarization. Um, with eighteen to twenty less students, um, we needed to do this so that we could better manage our cash flow and know what we were working with. Um.
Katie, can I pause you for just a second? So Tina, the, the first link that you sent there, uh, that has, or I guess you sent the link twice. Yes, that's the same link?
Yes.
Uh, that link has um, has this on it, right?
It does. And Katie, if you would like, I can share my screen so that as you.
That would be great, because I don't know how.
Okay.
So, so uh, or, so you can look at it on a screen share, which is gonna come up in just a minute. Then there's also then um, FY twenty twenty one Proposed Revised Budget Summary. Is that the, what we'll be looking at?
I think that's what we'll be looking at. If um, if you, if anyone has specific questions about some of the summary lines, we can always turn back to the, to the detail, but the detail spreadsheet gets a little busy, what with prior year actuals and original budgets and the, you know, three hundred or so lines of different accounts. It gets a little confusing.
Okay.
See the budget now?
No, it's a black screen, Tina.
Oh, no. Okay, give me just a moment, please. Thought I got, I thought I had this, Katie, but it's gonna take me a minute.
That's okay.
And Tina, if you're having problems, I can also, uh, I have it open here. I can also share it.
Great. Well, if you wanna jump right to that, that would be perfectly fine. I tried to snag it off the website. That didn't work so well. Perfect.
Okay, and so I'll just scroll as uh, as Katie is speaking, and uh, when, when I'm in a screen share, I can't see everybody's picture. So if somebody has a question, I'm not gonna be able to see you waving your hand, so just speak up, please, and, and don't, uh, don't wait to be um, called on. Just go ahead and, and speak, please.
Okay, so if we look at the revenue section of this budget, um, the rev, the revenue from state sources dropping by about three, about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, that's directly related to the decrease of eighteen students. It's our, our billing is approximately fourteen thousand dollars per student, and that's a a direct correlation to just the drop in um, expected students. Now, of course, we fully thought when we did the budget in May, early June last year, that we were gonna get up to the hundred and thirty, because we had people looking at the school. We had some really good prospects. Um, however, I really believe with COVID continuing, parents were just as happy to leave well enough alone. Leave their children where they knew the system, they knew the process, rather than try and do just one more additional thing. Um, I don't think that number is a reflection of our program, our staff, or desire to, or interest in our school. I think this year just happened to be a bad year for that. Um, revenue from federal sources, that's a little bit of a change in monies for the school lunch program, again, based on students. Um, the next line, local and other sources, that decrease of a hundred and hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is primarily, the last year, we got that two hundred thousand dollar gift, hundred thousand for last year and a hundred thousand for this year. Um, we had originally put the hundred thousand for this year in this year's budget, thinking that's when we were gonna get it, but we actually got it in June. So it was recognized as revenue in last year's audit, so we can't budget for money we already have. Um, the money was in the um, ending fund balance to be used for this year. It was temporarily restricted, so the monies are being used in this budget, but they were received in last year's, for all intents and purposes. So that is where our decrease of almost four hundred thousand dollars came from. Um.
I've got a question on the uh, state funding. I remember earlier in the process that we were put on notice by the Governor that there might be additional cuts coming. Do we still think that's gonna happen, or are we pretty certain that we're in a state current level?
There's been no new guidance. That came out last, I don't know, August, September.
Yeah.
But there's been nothing, one way or the other, or any kind of ten percent, twenty percent, anything. So we have, if you don't have a basis for budgeting, you can't budget.
Sure.
So um, we couldn't budget an unknown of a maybe, of an if, of a when, so we didn't.
Um, watch out for that trap door.
Well, you know, there is that, there's, there's always opportunities for things to crash it, cause problems, but um, it's really hard to budget a an amorphous cloud, so we didn't. Um, okay, so if we move down to the payroll service costs, the, our personnel service cost, that actually went up slightly compared to what we budgeted in, in May. And there's a couple reasons. One, we have additional, we have the final contract numbers, final salary numbers for the teachers that we have and the staff we have. Um, NISTERS contribution rate went up, so it went from like seven point seven percent to nine point five three percent, I think. Those are the numbers. Um, I had them written down somewhere, but I think that's what it was. So the, the NISTERS contribution that the school has to make went up a pretty decent percentage. We have more staff taking advantage of um, company offered health insurance this year, rather than taking the buyout, and that impacts that number as well. So that's what that is. Um, contracted services went down somewhat based on some expenses going down, but the bulk of it is reclassing the um, outside services we pay for technology into the school operations line, which is where all the other technology costs are, so it made sense. And putting the janitorial expenses into the facility operations and management, which is really where it belongs. So um, going forward, you know, we'll, every year we'll tweak something where we see something that doesn't make sense. This um, Robin was looking over things and brought it to our attention, and it makes sense to have all the technology expenses in one place and all the facility expenses in one place. So that's really what that is. Um, school operations numbers, they're twenty-five thousand dollars. If that is a reduction to recruitment ex, expected recruitment costs, we can't, it's not that we're not doing recruitment things, but we're doing more things online and remote, so we don't have to pay for traveling or having events places, and um, it's not as much mailings and stuff going out. And that's, a lot of that's based on the fact that donations haven't been earmarked for that, and we don't have like a hard and fast line on a donation amount coming in, so we had to cut somewhere, and we can't cut any costs that directly impact our, our current students anymore. So um, facilities operation and man, maintenance went up. Um, one, because the facilities, the janitorial costs are down there, but also our rent number changed a little bit, because when we did the original budget, we didn't use the right percentage increase that was in this year's in this year's portion of the lease, because we have a, I think it's a ten-year lease or a five-year lease, and the number goes up every year, and we didn't use the right percentage. So that's what that is. Um.
Can I ask a question before you get to the grand finale about um, revenue? Uh, back at revenue from federal funding. The projection, this is food services, am I right about that?
Yes.
Um, the presentation by Ms. Rosenbaum suggested a twenty-four percent decrease in revenue because of enrollment and the other challenges of, of the food operation. Is that recorded here or?
It is. That five thousand dollars reduction in that line is directly the food service five thousand dollar reduction in what we're expecting from the federal government for the food service. Yes.
So I guess I was confused of probably conflating her estimate of twenty-four percent loss of revenue versus what we're gonna get from the feds.
Well, because there's other things in that federal line. There's IDEA, Special Needs Funding, there's Title I Funding as well. So that hundred and twenty-seven thousand or hundred and twenty-two thousand is not just food. It's not just the lunch program.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and so our COVID contingency line, we didn't change, because we don't know if things are gonna change again in the spring or even later this winter. There's probably a little bit of room. if things are going to change again in the spring or even later this winter. There's probably a little bit of room in there. My guess is maybe $8,000 to $10,000. We may have a surplus on that line, but it's a contingency for a reason, so we didn't feel it was necessary to change it. Unfortunately, that shows our net income for this year is negative of 100,000 on this budget, but that is covered by the $100,000 gift we got last year. Does anybody have any questions or concerns, things you want to talk about?
Just Tanya, please.
So there's no money you expect to roll over into the next fiscal year to serve as a cushion for the school then, correct?
Unfortunately, we're not budgeting for much. We had a cash balance at the beginning of the year that included that 100,000. So anything that was left then, we're basically doing a zero budget. So basically, we're saying whatever cash minus that 100,000 we had on June 30th, we will have to roll into next year.
But based on this budget, we won't have anything to roll into.
Well, what I'm saying is if we had, I don't know what the exact beginning balance cash was, but if it was 162,000, 100 of that was allocated to this year's expenses, so we would have 62,000 left based on a zero budget.
Okay. But we don't know then what cash we had on hand at the end of the last fiscal year that might remain at the end of this fiscal year or budget.
Off the top of my head, I don't.
I just hope it's more than zero. That's
It is more than zero. I know that.
Let's see, and I'd be happy to look that up for you, Tanya, to see what our cash balance was. And then, of course, there is also some outstanding balances that we're working on from a number of districts, which we'll talk about in a bit. And, you know, that also will add to our total cash once those are collected. So I am now looking at the executive summary to see if I can find what the cash basis was, or the cash.
And I have one more question. Based on this budget, do you think that we will be able to continue to meet those retirement payments that we're trying to catch up on, or will we fall into arrears again?
It's difficult to say because we're still hearing from the state on the intercepts. Right now, quite honestly, with the numbers we have right now, we're not going to be able to do any more to catch up on our portion. We are putting aside current funds to take care of the current, but we won't be able to take care of the arrears.
Get worse.
It's not going to get worse. It'll stay. And we had, according to our audited financial statements, we had $260,000 of cash and cash equivalents on June 30th. So that would leave 160,000 for those type of things. But yeah, there's no way to make it pretty if we don't, you know, we're not going to be able to catch up.
I don't want you to make it pretty. I want it straight, so I know how, where we stand. Thank you.
Tanya just wants those 11,000 votes.
No, 11,870.
Right. So Tina, how is, if we can't make up any more ground on what we owe in arrears, what's your sense of how the Charter School Institute will respond to that in terms of our being on probation?
Well, currently, the only probation conditions or the corrective action plan conditions are that we continue to submit reports in a timely manner. So there are no other contingencies or requirement in terms of continued payment on the NISTERS debt. So technically, there's no impact on our probationary status. From a fiscal responsibility status, of course, you know, we are all anxious to pay down the past due balances and it's, so our goal of wiping our books clean in 2021 and recovering the monies through a variety of tactical actions in 2021 is our best opportunity to pay down that past due balance quickly.
Yeah, I just was hearing the voice of Barb in my head, as I'm sure you were as well.
Yeah, well, Barb Asenour, who is the head of finance for the Charter Schools Institute, is, of course, very anxious for us to repay this $200,000 in arrears, which we, again, we all are. And at the same time, our first responsibility is to our current students, and of course, the revenues that we're bringing in this year are for the education of the students that we serve this year. So that's our, as Katie said, that's our first priority.
I just, I just wonder, given that I think it was Jason who asked whether the state continues to think about reducing the amount it makes available to public schools, and if the state does, in fact, reduce that amount because it has to shift its expenditures to fight COVID, whether that's going to lessen our chances of recouping those monies owed, you know, from the other school districts. And therefore, I think that even though our priority may be to current students, we also have a responsibility to people who work in good faith. And so if we have 160,000 available at the end of the fiscal year, we must consider what portion of that will go towards that amount owed to the retirement system.
Absolutely. That would be the source. Looking at our reserves, what monies we are able to collect and, you know, any other sources of, you know, donations or other resources that would support our operating expenses for the educational program this year. All of that could be a resource for making, you know, payments, larger scale payments on the outstanding balance to NISTERS.
Yes, and I think as well that even if technically we only have to be concerned about reporting in a timely fashion, I think from a political standpoint, it's important that we appear to be a going concern or a financially stable concern. And so I think that we do have to be concerned about how narrow the margin is at the end of this current fiscal year, because you should always have some contingency because things happen.
Well, one of the avenues that we are exploring is applying for a paycheck protection program grant. And, you know, looking at our, you know, many charter schools have received funding through that program, which has now been, you know, renewed for the new year. So we are in the process of pulling together the application materials necessary and exploring our eligibility, so that too may give us some additional resources that we can, that we can apply to operations, which would then free up other resources for resolving this debt. And, you know, just for the record, Tanya, I completely agree with you that it's very important that we address this in a timely manner and to, you know, to make substantial forward motion this, you know, during this school year.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Katie, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I agree with Tina too. Tanya, you're, we have to figure out a way to address it. We just have to see how this year ends up, even if it's sending them $8,000, because, you know, we don't spend the whole COVID contingency, then that's what we're going to have to do.
And I do have a meeting once a month with Chris O'Grady, who's the chief finance officer for NISTERS. He's reviewed our audited financial statements, you know, like I've opened our books to him so that he really truly understands our financial situation. And, you know, they're very open to working with us, you know, in the to make sure that we have a plan that is workable for the school and, you know, doesn't compromise the needs of our students. So I'm really happy this year that we have that opportunity to work directly with NISTERS, you know, to create a mutually, a mutually agreeable plan that helps us to resolve this issue.
Are there any other questions about the budget for me?
So in that case, I think we will call the question. Kate, do you want to make a motion?
Yep, I motion that the board approve the revised budget for the 2021 school year as reviewed and discussed today.
Do I hear a second for that? A second by Tanya. Anybody have anything else to say before we vote? Okay, all voting members, please raise your hands so that I can see them. All right, that's unanimous. So this will then go off to the Charter Schools Institute along with our unanimous approval. All right. So there's two more things actually on the written agenda. One is to talk about what's up with the strategic plan, and then the next one is an anticipated executive session. Tina, were you going to report on the various intercepts tonight, or was that for a future meeting?
That would be for a future meeting, so that would be our next stage. I mean, my basic report about the intercept process is that we were told that we, so what intercepts are, for those who aren't familiar, are when we have payments that haven't been made by school districts, we can apply to the state to intercept funds, meaning take the money that they owe us out of the state aid that they would otherwise be receiving. We were told that we would receive word about the status of those applications from the state this fall. And that makes sense because the school districts received their state aid in three payments in September, October, and November. We didn't hear in September, October, November, December, there's been no word from New York State about the status of the intercepts. And so I think we can assume that for this year, we will not be, you know, this isn't a matter, these aren't matters that will be resolved through intercept. But we do have a, you know, a number of outstanding balances that we're seeking to collect from some that are just under $10,000 to $20,000, as well as some that are longer, you know, longer term outstanding balances from the, from our largest district.
Great, thank you, Tina. Right, we're going to move on then to a report on the strategic planning process. So I'm going to just fill you on all in a little bit. We had decided last time that we, step one was to come up with this draft framework for the strategic planning process, and then to roll that out to various constituent groups for feedback. So the student council met and discussed these, and I'll share them in just a minute. The Parents Action Committee met and discussed it. The staff met and discussed it, and I was there for all of those. Joe was there for one. I can't, I can't remember who all was able to attend various ones of those.
Tanya came to the staff meeting.
Right.
And Peter, yeah?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I was there.
So I'm going to share, I'm going to share this document now, just to remind you all of kind of what it, what it says. And so, again, in the strategic planning kind of process, this isn't a plan. There's not a specific set of actionable prioritized steps with dates on them yet, but this is the framework that, at least as of now, the community has been presented with and has been discussing and has been giving us kind of their off-the-cuff thoughts on it. So what we are doing now is going back and starting to decide who is going to do what and when, and then within each of these categories, prioritizing what the action steps are, those sorts of things. So what Tina has done here is just put in some notes. The bold items are the steps in the framework, and the asterisk items are some various things that are going on. So number two, for example, engage all stakeholders. Tina, could you please fill us in on what's happening with that one?
Yes, so for each of those first two bullet items, we are, when I say we, our staff, primarily Michael Mazza and I are working together now to adopt a clear action plan with deliverables and dates in which we can roll out both our advertising or outreach and press releases that deliver a consistent coherent message to our community, educating the community about who we are as an innovative space and public education that was made possible by the Charter Schools Act. And also in a way of having our ongoing meetings that we have with stakeholders be an opportunity for all of us to engage in an ongoing dialogue about those same issues. This also includes outreach to folks in our local public education system and local officials. So, for instance, one example is that last month, I sent out the first of my monthly messages to area superintendents. And in that message, I focused on sharing information about how we have managed our transitions back to school after holiday breaks by having a week of remote learning in order to reduce opportunities for infection by COVID if people were exposed over the holiday break. So you know, our focus is going to be sharing with districts and sharing with, you know, district officials lessons that we've learned that we think might be of value to them, or ways in which we are serving students or families within their district. So the idea is how can we support districts and seeing us as value-added to the public school community here in, here in the Ithaca, the larger Ithaca region. Other outreach that we're doing right now includes sharing information about charter school funding with local business officials, and also communicating with committee on special education officials in districts about the ways in which New Roots is serving students with special needs and how, you know, for many, many students who have experienced anxiety or learning difficulties in larger schools are experiencing success at New Roots, and we want the districts to know that, you know, that we're offering a benefit to the residents in their district. So those are, those are some of the examples of the types of communications that we're doing, in addition to more of the, you know, the advertising and promotion. We're also designing a series of educational symposiums that will happen throughout the spring that focus on New Roots mission, vision, and the programming that we offer.
Does anybody have any questions or comments just so far about those first two bold statements?
I just didn't catch the second example after the communication with the superintendents.
Sharing information with business officials about charter school financing and funding to increase education about, you know, in that area to ease our, you know, to facilitate our relationship. You know, to facilitate our relationships around finances. That was the second one. And the third was the work with the Committees on Special Education. To share information about student success and well being at New Roots.
I'm pleased that you're making that effort with number two, the communication with business leaders about the funding. Because as most are well aware, there's a understanding in the community. That New Roots is taking money away from ICSD in particular. To the detriment of the ICSD students. And in fact, we're not even getting as much from the state as ICSD gets for their students. So it's a false, it's a bit of false news, but it's widespread.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, the next item is just what's happening with right sizing New Roots. We've talked before about the fact that we've been, our enrollment targets have not been met for several years. Out of our existence. And so one question is, is. Maybe it's time to start making smaller enrollment targets. And so then the question is. Is what should that be in this case? What's appropriate for our our mission and vision? And what's appropriate for our ability to make balanced budgets? This one, as it turns out, is one of the ones that has, that's the most interesting to many of the kind of the people in the school. Like the students, for example, is what is how big is this school actually going to be and how big should it be? Another part of this question is, should we eventually be aspiring to a middle school? To act as a feeder school for New Roots? So right now, Tina, is there anything happening? In that item, other than kind of the meetings that we've already had?
No further action at this point, but what we had discussed was the possibility of them bringing this conversation. Back into our various stakeholder groups in order to hear perspectives on both the issue of the middle school. As well as the question of like, you know, is New Roots the right size? Would would our students like to see a bigger school? Or, you know, actually, some of the insights that I heard from student council suggested that, you know, our students actually really like. Like the smaller school setting, right? So so I think we'll we'll get some, as we focus in on that question, we'll get some really good insights. That can help us think forward about, you know, this next iteration of New Roots. And we know whether growth is, growth for growth's sake is not, is not a good goal. But growth for the sake of, you know, optimizing our programs is is a fabulous goal.
And this is gonna come to the fore here very, very shortly, because in our charter renewal, we have to put in a number. And so we're gonna have to decide, are we gonna put a number that's the same, bigger or smaller? Than the number that was in our last charter renewal application. So this one is, we're gonna have to decide on this one. And it can't, it can't be nebulous. It's gonna actually have to be a real live number. Tanya, you had a question?
Yes, um, have our. Is the actual enrollment the result of recruitment or no recruitment? Because my sense is that the school has not actively had a. Implemented a marketing and promotion program, so we don't know what enrollment might be. If we were more active in telling the story of New Roots. And so if our enrollment is a result of passive promotion, that's a good sign, I think. But I agree that if we're going to tout all of the benefits of our small size for our students. Then we have to be careful about trying to then be become a size that does not allow us to. Offer those benefits to our students. So I would think that we would say that our size will continue to be, let's say, a hundred and fifteen students. And if we get ten more, wonderful, but we we don't want to drop below what our average has been for the last, say, three years. Including this year, which. Is a blip on the screen, I would assume. And I, and I think that in terms of right sizing. It's not just about how many students do we want, but it's also how many students. Is the state willing to reimburse us for? And so I think that we need to have a conversation with either the Board of Regents or the. What is it? The Charter School Council, because if they're not going to advocate for us with respect to intercepts. Or if they're not even going to respond truthfully. To help us get the money that is due, then it's going to be difficult to talk about a right size. Because then it's not really about the number of students you have, but the amount of money you will be reimbursed for.
Here, here, I guess.
Well, I mean. It doesn't seem to me that it matters the the numbers, what matters is whether they will give us the intercepts or not. And I think therefore we need to have a frank conversation with the decision makers. About whether their personal animosities are going to interfere with their. Responding professionally and legally to. The services that we provide. Might as well.
And Tanya, I think that part of that is what is driving. Point number two on this, about trying to educate local officials and local educational institutions. On what their legal obligations actually are. And this might be a place where we might start making greater use of Michael Volsey's services. To try to. Explain more clearly what people's, what institute, what district's legal obligations are to us. Yeah. Alright, we're gonna move on now to the next point, which is a year round recruitment. And we've mentioned before that even though we are a public school, in terms of numbers. We need to function like a private school, in which case recruitment is something that's done by everybody always. That's just what it means to be a charter school in in Ithaca, New York. What does that mean for the people who work at New Roots? It's not clear yet, but that's what we have to figure out.
I am really excited about the work that Michael Mazza has been doing on the both the marketing and outreach fronts. As well as thinking about how to, how to lead an initiative with all of, with our, with our staff, with our students and families. That truly help people engage with that question, right? Like, how do we, we all play different roles in that, right? It's not, recruiting doesn't mean, you know, going out and cold calling or knocking on people's doors, right? But we all contribute to telling the story about the school and welcoming people into the school community. And educating people about our school and so helping people to see what, you know, what their role is. And in ways that they can optimize that role is a really, I think, exciting potential for a lot of, a lot of growth. In how we think about what it means to be part of a recruitment process. So, you know, one of these upcoming board meetings, you might like to have Michael talk about the the groundwork that he's laying for that.
And this is also a place where the students have expressed enthusiasm. This is what Tara, Mason and Leila were talking about earlier. In terms of trying to get their stories out. To 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 find people who, find students who this place will be a good fit for. The next item, year round fundraising, same same issue, even though we are a public school. It's very clear to us now, much more so than it has been, that we need to function like a private school. In terms of fundraising, that fundraising needs to be done year round by everybody always. And so again, we're trying to figure out what that, what that means for for people on the ground. But that is going to be the reality based on the way the formulas work. For the percentage that we get from districts for per per pupil allocation. There's no way around this at this point.
And I think something that should be said about fundraising is that it gives people an opportunity to participate in. Making great things happen in the world that they might not be able to contribute to in other ways. So people can contribute their time, talent or treasure to making visions a reality. And I'm excited to see us open up more opportunities for people to become part of the good work that we do.
I apologize for treading a little bit over into operations. But given that recruiting is partly about revenue as well as getting great people. Great young people to come to the school. Recruiting or the staff allocation of resources to to the area of revenue. Might well start to include fundraising by the staff members. One might have a recruiter coordinator slash professional fundraiser slash grant writer. As a possibility. Again, I apologize because it's not really the board's role to suggest operations and personnel. But it struck me that we may have to be thinking in those directions.
Absolutely.
And then the last item on this list is talking about data and renewal benchmarks. As we all know. SUNY is just bonkers for data. And I'll just make, I I know it's being recorded, but I will mention that they're they're bonkers for data, whether or not the data is any good or not. Sorry, I didn't say that, but of course I did because it's recorded. So, but the point being is that. We need to really emphasize a data driven approach in order to satisfy our authorizers. And so this is going along towards those lines. And Tina, you and your staff are working on a data dashboard?
Absolutely. I am really excited about the work that Ian Cummings is doing as, you know, as he's diving deep into. Looking at the information that we are collecting and how can we. How can we begin to use that to get clarity about things that matter to us, that are helpful to us internally to know? As well as the, you know, how do we gather the data that helps us to tell that story to the community or to the authorizer? So as well as looking at what are some of the issues? And did some great investigative work to determine what was the reason for the disconnect in our internal reporting to the institute. About our English Regents exams from twenty eighteen and what we were seeing in the state report card. And, you know, come to find out there was a technical issue in early June twenty eighteen. That had a really significant impact on the ways that our data showed up in that that state, that state warehouse. And therefore in our in our report card. And of course, misinform, you know, errors like that create misinformation. That then we spend a lot of time trying to address. And so I'm excited that, you know, Ian is really. Hitting his stride now in, you know, figuring out all the ins and outs of data world, as I like to call it. And also connecting us with some really cutting edge thinkers in the world of charter school data reporting. That are that are going to be working with us to help us to design some some dashboards and ways of communicating out to the world about what we're learning. By looking at our data.
It would really be great to hear back along the lines of accountability, which is another way of talking about what you. Just mentioned, Tina, we had a interesting kind of toe in the water presentation. On new and appropriate ways to both assess how students perform. And then how to package that so that it's understood in the community and by our authorizer. But I would not want it to end with the presentation on the front end. We'd really like to hear what the faculty and the staff has come to conclude are those measures. And then how it's going to be collected or how we actually are already performing if that data is available.
Great, so our school leadership team hit the ground running with a meeting yesterday in which they they. Crystallize the the actual measures they're going to be pursuing and are developing a professional development for teachers. The week of what would have been Regents Week in order to design performance based assessments that will be used in courses across the disciplines. So I'm sure they would be happy to come any, you know, to any of these upcoming board meetings to report out on that work.
Well, and and are they, do you anticipate they'll be used this year?
Absolutely, yes.
So the results of that would be great to see.
Absolutely. And we will have quarterly results on the education for sustainability benchmarks. The the Regents equivalent performance based assessments would be given in June, just like the Regents.
Alright, so that's kind of where we're standing right now. Eventually, we will work this out into bit by bit into. Action steps, priorities and dates. And so that is is where this is going at this point. And and since this is the board strategic plan for the school. This will be coming back to all of us many times to fill in these details. I'd just like to point out, there's, there's kind of one more thing that the board needs to do. It's either part of the strategic plan or in addition to the strategic plan. But in order to implement the strategic plan and just in looking at ourselves, it's very clear. That we need to increase the size of this board. There are some board members whose terms are ending. And the board has gotten significantly smaller than it was when the school, when we were at our our peak size. So it's also been mentioned to me that this is a concern of the Charter Schools Institute. Of how small our board is getting. I think we need to bring in people who have legal expertise, who have HR expertise, who have fundraising expertise. There's many of us. Know these people in the community. And I think that we need to make it. A really priority goal to to have three or four more people brought onto this board before we go up for charter renewal. Or else I I anticipate that there's going to be issues. So I ask each person on the board to really think seriously about. How can we increase the size of this board by fifty percent before August? Hence, one of the reasons why Laura is here this evening, dipping her toe potentially into this pool. I think it's actually a great time to be on the board. The last couple of years, I think, has has not been a good time to try to bring people on the board. Because we've been under such attack all the time. But now, really, I think that we are in a place where it's quite exciting to come on to this board. And try to get this next renewal and launch us into the next renewal period. So I think it's a really great time for people as opposed to basically apologizing to people like, sorry, you know, it's a bad time. But would you want to come on? We're not in that situation right now. Sorry, Tanya, that's when Tanya came on. But I actually think it's right, it's it's quite an exciting time to come on.
An exciting time.
So, so please, every. So, so please, everybody, we need to increase the size of this board by 50% by August. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to consider a vote to go into executive session to discuss proposed pending and current litigation. So first, do I hear a motion to go into executive session? It's, it's a motion by Joe. So those of you who are not voting board members, you will not be invited into executive session, except for Mike, who is our attorney. The rest of you, thank you so much. When we come back from executive session, we will adjourn the meeting immediately. So there will be no further actions or discussions after the executive session. So there's, you're not going to miss anything if you decide not to wait around for us to come back out of, of executive session. So with that, all those in favor of going into executive session, please raise your hands so that I can see it. That is unanimous. All right. It was seconded by Tanya, I think, or Kate. Tanya and Kate. I think Tanya was the one whose hand I saw first. So thanks, Ian, thanks, Mason, thanks, Tara, Leila, thank you so much, Laura, it's nice to see you again, thanks, Ian. And, and we will see you all around or at the next meeting.
I'm good, thank you, everybody.
Everybody, take care.
So Tina, I guess we stop recording at this point?
Yes.